Good afternoon. Welcome to our Tuesday, January ninth meeting. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we are going to jump right into business today. County engineer?
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution sixteen, authorize change order four to the agreement with Brumball Construction Incorporated for the airway road bridge replacement project, City of Riverside, by adding sixteen thousand six hundred dollars to the original amount for a revised total of one million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Resolution seventeen, rescind resolution number twenty-three dash one five five, authorizing an agreement with GEO Buyers Holding LLC for the purchase of six 2024 Ford trucks. Authorize agreements, resolution eighteen, RB Jergens Contractors for the Shoot Mill Road Reconstruction Project, Harrison Township at their lowest and best bid of five million nine hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents through August first, 2025. Resolution nineteen, A and B Asphalt Corporation for the 2023 ADA Ramp Improvement Program, Miami Township at their lowest and best bid of one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents through June seventh, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have submit grant applications to the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services. Resolution twenty, State of Ohio Violent Crime Reduction Grant Program in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand. Resolution twenty-one, Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Fund Grant Program in the amount of fifty thousand. Resolution twenty-two, Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Fund Grant in the amount of fifty thousand.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Common Police Court?
Under the Common Police Court, we have resolution twenty-three, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board for the Brunner Literacy Project in an amount of fifty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen through June thirtieth, 2024.
Move to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court?
Hello, Commissioners, everyone. For Juvenile Court, resolution twenty-four, to accept a grant from the Adamus Board for the Adverse Childhood Experiences Initiative in the amount of ninety-six thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars through September twenty-ninth, 2024. And resolution twenty-five, From Fatherless to Fearless, to provide mental health and financial education services in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. And resolution twenty-six, Breaking Barriers Incorporated, for a strength-based, gender-responsive, comprehensive and holistic intervention program through the Rise Above Program for females ages ten to twenty-one in an amount not to exceed nine thousand five hundred dollars.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Breaking Barriers is a great program. It really is. Thank you. Okay, Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Monday Community Correctional Institution, we have resolution twenty-seven, authorize an agreement with the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board for reimbursement of psychotropic medicines and peer recovery services in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars through June thirtieth, 2024.
Move to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public Defender?
Under the Public Defender, we have resolution twenty-eight, authorize an agreement with Marriott University of Dayton for group sales services for the Dayton Criminal Defense College Trial School Program from August first, 2024 through August seventh, 2024.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator, Michael?
Thank you. Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk of the Commission, approve the meeting minutes of the meeting on December nineteenth, 2023. Resolution twenty-nine, approval of bills. Resolution thirty, approval of travel and expenses. Resolution thirty-one, approval of personnel actions. All three lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services, Tyler?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for you today, beginning with resolution thirty-two. This resolution authorizes a consultant service agreement with Burton Planning Services for the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Risk Safety and Emergency Management Department in an amount not to exceed forty thousand fourteen dollars through July seventeenth of 2024. Resolution thirty-three, authorizes a facility rental agreement with Sinclair Community College for the Fatherhood Summit in an amount not to exceed five thousand fifty dollars and ninety-five cents. Resolution thirty-four, authorizes the approval of Justice Web Service Agreements with various criminal justice and governmental entities. Resolution thirty-five, authorizes a renewal option with the Montgomery County Abstractors Association for leasing of five hundred and forty-four square feet of office space in the administration building at a rate of forty-five dollars per desk per month through December thirty-first of 2024. Resolution thirty-six, renews the price agreement with Addus Healthcare Incorporated, doing businesses Arcadia Home Care and Staffing for temporary nursing services for the Stillwater Center through January thirty-first, 2025, with options to extend. Resolution thirty-seven, requests proposals for employee benefits brokerage consulting services for the Administrative Services Department. Resolution thirty-eight, solicits bids for fire hydrant replacement services for the Environmental Services Department. The next two resolutions select bids and authorize agreements through December thirty-first of 2025. We have, the first is resolution thirty-nine, with Levin Porter Architects for the Montgomery County Jail Mental Health Detox and Behavioral Health Units Project in an amount not to exceed one million two hundred and fifty-four thousand plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed eighty-two thousand dollars. And next is resolution forty, with LWC Incorporated for the Juvenile Justice Center Probation, Relocation and Renovation Project in an amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. The last three resolutions we have today authorize price agreements for 2024 water treatment chemicals for the Environmental Services Department through December thirty-first of 2024. The first is resolution forty-one, with PVS Knollwood Chemicals Incorporated. Resolution forty-two is with PVS Chemical Solutions Incorporated. And resolution forty-three is with PVS Technologies Incorporated.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Dodge, I think thirty-five is interesting. When you were recorder, I think that was the same amount of square feet that you used then.
I think it was, exactly.
And apparently...
I remember it well.
I mean, I know I still see some of them in the building, but everything's online now. I don't think that's really interesting.
Exactly. We used to have a pretty big crowd down there.
Oh, yeah.
Many years ago.
We'll take their rent. All right. Tyler? No, we just had Tyler. I'm sorry. Matt, Matt, Matt. Environmental Services.
Thanks, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have resolution forty-four, authorize an agreement with CG Construction and Utilities Incorporated for construction of the Lamb Road twelve-inch water main relocation project at their lowest and best bid of one hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars through August twenty-ninth, 2024. Resolution forty-five, amend the agreement with Tank Industry Consultants for the South Metro Tank Rehabilitation Project by adding two hundred and five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars to the original amount for a revised total of two hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and extending the term through December thirty-first, 2025. Resolution forty-six, accept the easement deed for the Chipotle at ten thirty-three South Main Street in Centerville Project and record the same. The following two resolutions are to approve the plan specifications, estimated cost and solicit bids. Resolution forty-seven, with Bright Brant Pike Water Main Replacement Project at an estimated cost of five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Resolution forty-eight, Cedar Lawn Water Main Replacement Project and estimated cost of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. The next three or two release one hundred percent of the performance bonds with MI Homes of Cincinnati LLC. Resolution forty-nine, Washington Glen Section Three Development. Resolution fifty, Washington Glen Section Four Development. Resolution fifty-one, Washington Glen Section Five Development. The next three or two accept twenty percent performance bonds. Resolution fifty-two, with Washington Glen Section Three Development in the amount of seventy thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. Resolution fifty-three, Washington Glen Section Four Development in the amount of sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Resolution fifty-four, Washington Glen Section Five Development in the amount of one hundred thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the final two or two accept surety checks. Fifty-five, with Sheets Benchwood Development in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred dollars. And resolution fifty-six, Roadstar Trucking Development in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Michelle?
Thank you, Commissioners. Resolution fifty-seven, authorizing an agreement with Family Service Association Incorporated for the Stewards of Children Training in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents through June thirtieth, 2024. Resolution fifty-eight, authorizing an interagency agreement on behalf of the Family and Children First Council for the transition from early intervention services to preschool special education programs and other appropriate services. Resolution fifty-nine, accepting a grant from the State of Ohio Department of Development to provide rapid rehousing assistance in the amount of five hundred and two thousand nine hundred dollars. Resolution sixty, is authorizing an agreement to provide eligibility, referral and support services to premier health partners for two FTEs with funding reimbursement in the actual amount of our cost for fifty percent of expenses, including salaries, fringe benefits, through December thirty-first, 2024. Resolution sixty-one, soliciting a request for proposals for the prevention, retention and contingency processing and implementation services for our PRC plan. And then we do have a late item, resolution eighty-five, authorizing an agreement with Dr. Mark Botler for physician services in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand through December thirty-first, 2024. This is for Stillwater Center.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Business Services, Chris?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Business Services, Animal Resource Center. First, resolution sixty-two, accept a grant from Best Friends Animal Society for the cost of one-year subscription of the Better Impact Software Program of volunteer management software, amount not to exceed one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Resolutions sixty-three, authorizes a purchase from Udemy Inc. for our business training licenses in amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents through October tenth, 2026. Under Community Economic Development, resolution sixty-four, authorizes an agreement with Technical Services Collaborative LLC for backup plans examiner services in the building regs department in amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars through December thirty-first, 2024. Sixty-five, authorizes an economic development government equity edge agreement with the City of Vandelia for the Electro Polish Project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or one point two-two percent of the total project cost, whichever is less. Sixty-six, accepts a grant from the Ohio Department of Development for the Lead Safe Ohio Program in an amount not to exceed four million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars through April thirtieth, 2026. And one late item under IT. Resolution zero-zero-eight-six, authorizes a purchase agreement with Infotech Research Group for hardware, software and annual training for the BCC IT Department in amount not to exceed fifty thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-six cents through January thirteenth, 2025.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So on sixty-six, who would like to talk a little bit more about that? Tell us what we're going to do. Matt Buckle? Chris?
I could talk briefly about it, yes. We put in for this grant, really haven't baked out exactly how we want to use this. We're looking at two different options, whether it's lead paint or lead potential identification and replacement of lead pipes for ES. But that's a work in progress.
Commissioners, this dovetails right within our plan. We submitted to the EPA a series of grants on a strategy of remediation of lead-based pipes. So between what we'll do with the EPA and this grant that came from the Department of Development, we want to do a combination of lead remediation across the county. So this will be a joint effort between our Business Services Department and our Environmental Services Department.
Great. Thank you. Okay, and County Commission, where should we have? Resolution sixty-seven, sixty-seven, to approve the change in the boundary lines between the City of Dayton and the City of Riverside by agreement of both municipalities pursuant to section seven oh nine thirty-seven of the Ohio Revised Code. And twenty-four sixty-eight is to reappoint Diane Marks to the Public Defender Commission for a four-year term through December thirty-first of 2027. And twenty-four sixty-nine is to reappoint David Bills to the Transportation Improvement District Board of Trustees through December thirty-first, 2025. Twenty-four seventy is to reappoint Eric Schaefer, Representative at Large, to the Family and Children First Council through December thirty-first of twenty-six. And seventy-one is to reappoint Stephen Holland as the Montgomery County Apiary Inspector for the year 2024.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thanks to Steve Holland.
Yes.
How many years has he done this?
Right. And we all know what an apiary inspector is. But I'm not sure everybody does. Would you like to explain it, Emily?
He inspects our beehives.
Very good. He inspects our beehives.
Beehives, that's right.
I think it's great. And he's always done it. Thank goodness.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. We do have a citizen signed up to speak. So I'm going to ask you to come on up, give us your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes. Robert Walsh, come on up.
Thank you. I'm Robert Walsh, four-six-two-five Silverwood Drive in Kettering. And I want to talk about the Silverwood Drive Water Replacement, Water Main Replacement Project. Now, I'm a homeowner and a resident of Kettering. And the Water Main Project by Montgomery County on Silverwood Drive was started in May of last year. It's small. It affected twenty-six homes, though. We were assured by the project engineer that afterwards our properties would be restored to original or near original conditions. But we're not close to that. We need help, and that's why I'm here. I have a petition that's signed by over half of the residents that were affected by this, and we're asking for your help in this. I also have two letters, those pictures, that verify everything I'm about to say. The clerk has the petitions and the letters for you. We were told by the county engineer that our yards that were trenched would be topped with six inches of topsoil. That was not done. The dirt used was fill dirt full of gravel and clay. And several residents told me they spent hours clearing rock and gravel out of the dirt. We were told that the construction sites would be reseeded with quality seeds similar to what our lawn's composition is. That was not done. They did spray a seed mix on that was full of thistle, Johnson grass, nut's edge and many other weeds. They took over the poor soil. One resident spent over two hundred dollars to put better soil and seed in himself. We were told the ground would be compacted for stability. That was not done. I couldn't even get my mower over it to cut the weeds. It sank in over three inches. Now, all of these complaints have nothing to do with the waterworks project. They all have to do with the finishing work that was done by Double J Landscaping. Now, we're asking for the Commissioner's help in getting our properties back to the standards we expected. And that would mean removing the filter to a depth of six inches and replacing it with proper topsoil. That's Montgomery County standard. We want proper grass seed without weeds spread and the soil compacted. Also, Montgomery County standards. Now, all of these issues are common to the people that signed the petition. My property was the central point for where the project was done. They dug there and went in both directions. I was affected more than anyone else. I had a hundred and fifty-foot trench in my yard. And I have additional problems that I've detailed in my letter to you. They put an access panel when they reconnected the water. It's four inches below grade. It's going to puddle water, and the grass isn't going to grow there. I'm not going to be able to mow over something that's got a pothole that deep. And I want it raised back to ground level. They put a new fire hydrant in. It used to be across the street. Now it's in my yard. Okay, that's okay. But they put it nine inches above grade. I've driven through a lot of neighborhoods looking for any fire hydrant as tall as the one in my yard. I can't find any. I'd like that put at ground level. I had three downspouts from my house to the curb. And when they trench, they had to dig through that. I understand that. But they only reconnected one of them. I had to dig a trench twenty feet to locate a second one. And when I did, they reconnected it. I'd like the county's help in finding the third one and getting that reconnected. I also had sprinkler system that they dug up. They did nothing to replace either the sprinklers or the piping. Now, the project engineer had told me that, and my wife, that all of these issues would be addressed at the end of the project. And he said that they may come back in the spring and do additional work. I know they can't spread seed right now. I'd like to, your help, Commissioners and Sir, to see that this gets done. And if you look at the pictures accompanying these letters, you can see that as of now, this has not happened. My issues are not about the Water Main Project, and I'd like to commend the county for being proactive and replacing this before we had a failure and leaks. So thank you for that. And I would like to ask, if anything gets done, with whom should I follow up?
Mr. Walsh? We're going to have Matt Hilliard here, Matt, Roger. So that Matt's going to talk to you right after this meeting. I want to thank you for bringing this entire thing to our attention. And Matt and his team will work with you and will follow up on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, comments by our County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to remind all of our citizens who get food assistance and cash assistance benefits loaded onto the EBT card that you can now protect those benefits by locking your card when you're not using it. You can get the Connect EBT app or find details at connectebt.com. And we're fortunate to have our Job and Family Services Director here, Michelle. Throw your hand up, Michelle, so everybody can see you, who knows this in detail. With this app, though, you can sign up for the text and email alerts for all transactions. And you can get alerted if there are any changes to your account. And this would be like someone trying to change your password or your address or your PIN number. Now, there's a quick video on Montgomery County's YouTube channel that walks you through how to use these features. Please consider getting the Connect EBT app today and protect yourselves from scammers if you receive public assistance. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner, can I see the printed comments?
I have to do all this, the time, the time, the time.
I'm trying to pull mine up in this technology, and it's not pulling it up.
Just read this top.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you so much. She always is prepared. You can tell she was a Girl Scout.
I was.
I know you were. So this last Saturday, Judy Carolyn and I, and Kevin, we fought that horrible snow we had. Well, Matt was there early, and I mismet, that's true. That's right. I was kind of joking when I said the horrible snow, but some people thought it was horrible. But it was okay.
A couple of us.
Yeah.
Kind of whiny.
It didn't stop the hundreds and hundreds of people. Five hundred and fifty people came through to recycle their styrofoam. Our county auditor came through. Tawana, our Economic Development Director, came through. So this event has just grown every time. And in fact, I shared it on Facebook, and I had several people message me, wait, when's the next one? When's the next one? Because we save our styrofoam, and that's a great thing. Because when we do that, it keeps it out of the landfill, right, Matt? So the traffic just kept coming, even past the one o'clock mark when it was over. But we also have to thank all the volunteers. There were so many volunteers. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, City of Centerville team, the parks. And it made it our biggest event ever. So this is our fourth year of doing it. I think that was our twelfth time, Matt, I think. I think it was our twelfth.
Wow.
Yeah. So we have collected forty-five thousand pounds of styrofoam. So think about that. Styrofoam's pretty light. Considering how light it is, that is just a tremendous amount of styrofoam that we've kept out of our landfill. So our partners, as I mentioned, Centerville, Centerville Washington Park, but Echo Development, they're the ones that do this for us. They bring the big semis. We filled up two semis and a little bit more this time. But they repurpose these materials into surfboards and picture frames and other things. We always say other things. I'm not quite sure what they all are. But other things.
All kinds of other things.
Well, you know, it's that material. Like, they had a lump of it, shows like what a huge goes down to a lump, and it's a little bit heavier. And then they can use it in molds and all kinds of... Yeah. I mean, think about surfboards and that material. Yeah. So we want to especially thank Boy Scout Troop five sixteen and Girl Scout Troop five fifteen because they came out and they helped us. And every time they come out, they get covered in styrofoam. But the nice thing is, it works towards their sustainability badge. So, yeah, it's great.
Yep.
It's great.
And the next one's going to be April thirteenth at Rose Music Center.
Thank you, Judy.
Anytime.
Yeah.
And that's in Huber Heights, and I think there'll be a band playing, maybe.
Maybe. No. I don't know that they start by then.
No, I know. I know. Anyway. But I have to give a shout out, and I think that all of us agree. Those scouts, those boys and girl scouts, boy, they just worked and just, they were right involved with it. I thought that was pretty cool.
We would try to go to a car to get stuff out, and they were already ahead of us to grab it.
They were grabbing it from us. So it was...
It was great. It was nice.
It was great. So I also have to mention that the county is always in need of foster and adoptive parents. You know, there's about seven hundred kids, I can't believe that, in our foster care system at any time. And these kids desperately need loving, caring homes. If there is room in your heart and your home, please consider coming to learn more at our informational meeting, which is, whoa, tonight, which is Tuesday, January the ninth, from six to seven-thirty at the Haynes Center, thirty-three oh four North Main Street in Dayton. And you can register under Foster Care and Adoption at the Children's Services Area of mcohio.org. As well, don't forget about our little four-legged friends because dogs that are over three months old must have a license on it all times under Ohio law. Now, you only have about three weeks left to get your license at the lowest price possible, which is right now twenty dollars for a dog that has been spayed or neutered or twenty-four dollars for an unaltered dog. You know, there's many, many outposts around town where these can be purchased. You can also complete the process to license your dog at mcanimals.org. And you can also find more details there. So I know that Commissioner Lieberman has a couple of dogs that I'm sure you're going to have to save your money to get them, get their little licenses.
I'm saving right now. All right. Well, I had the pleasure, it's January, it's 2024. We'd need to think about income tax, and our tax returns will be coming up in April. So we have a terrific program. I think Dean Lovelace started this in the City of Dayton years ago. Couple decades ago, actually. And this is a wonderful program. It's an earned income tax credit program. And they team up with a group called the Volunteer Income Tax Assistant, or they call it VIDA. So these are individuals that are trained and for free, they give their services to individuals across our county who qualify. And this is really helps for an individual, you can get up to six hundred dollars earned income tax credit. And for a family, seven thousand dollars, depending on your, you know, your situation. They will sit down with you, go over, you bring in the paperwork. You must have an appointment. You don't just walk in. There's numerous different locations. The VIDA tax sites will be open at the Job Center, the Trotwood and Northwest branches of the Dayton Metro Library, and other locations. And that'll be between January twenty-third and April fifteenth. So if you are a Montgomery County resident who needs help with your taxes, please look into this program. And they shared a story where an individual with a family, you know, had a relatively simple program, but he was paying someone until he discovered this program, five hundred dollars to process, you know, to do his taxes. So in addition to what he found out he qualified for, he saved himself and his family five hundred dollars. And given the inflation that especially, you know, families are really struggling to meet all the bills, this is really important. So help us spread the word on this earned income tax program. And there's free expert help in order to get it done, get it done on time. But you must make an appointment. So to get more details, you can go to ohiolegalhelp.org. So it's a great program, and I'm very proud to be part of that. Great. Great. All right, well, our next, we do not have a meeting next Tuesday. M L K, Monday. What? It's M L K. The Martin Luther King Holiday on Monday. So a lot of activities I know will be busy all day. Yes, there are. The, um, March starts at nine-thirty out here at Drew Health, and the county always has a great presence, a great group of people. Um, so our next meeting will be on January twenty-third.
Where is this month going?
I don't know. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great week.